Can we start or we want to still wait?
I think we can start.
We can start.
Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to welcome you all on behalf of Mobius Foundation. My name is Jessica and I'm a senior researcher and program lead at Mobius. So, we have a very special session today that I'm introducing Mission Life: Green Jobs Through Sustainable Lifestyles. And we're very honoured that this session would be moderated by Dr. Barucha, who needs no introduction. So, sir, please may I invite you onto the stage. So, please take a seat. We will also have a keynote address by Dr. Vivek Saxena, IFS, PCCF Wildlife and Chief Wildlife Warden, Government of Haryana. Sir, may I please invite you onto the stage? Thank you. And our esteemed panelists today are Dr. Vasanti Rao, DG, Centre for Media Studies, CMS, and Director, CMS, Vatavaran. Welcome, ma'am. Ms. Nidhi Relan, Principal Strategist, Forum for the Future. Welcome. Dr. Sagar Dhatir, Scientist, the Naroji Godrit Centre for Plant Research, Pune. Welcome, sir. And Dr. HBC Chari Gunthapalli, Scientist, E-Life Cell, Ministry of Environment, Forests and Climate Change. I don't see her. She's probably joining us later. Dr. Saurav Opadia, Scientist, MOE FCC, New Delhi. I think as and when they do... So, when they do come, then they can join us, yeah? So, shall we begin? Thank you, thank you so much for joining us today. So... Dr. Barucha? Can I hand over the session over to you now?
Yes, thank you very much and welcome all of you here. And this is a very, very important...
Sir, should you move there when you are presenting?
No, don't worry.
Can you see when they are sitting here?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, okay.
So, I think it's best that we are here. So, this is a session which is going to transform many, many things. And, you know, mostly all of you know, environment education has passed through so many cycles, right? Started with nature education and then became, when we started getting more and more pollution and impacts, we made it environment education. And then, when we realised that it's become a crisis situation and that economics has so much to do with it and fuel has so much to do with it, we started doing education for sustainable development. And now, we realise that it's jobs that are needed to make all this thing a reality. And so, we've got this new way of looking at mission life. So, I'm going to very quickly pass through a few slides, so I'm not going to take a lot of time. But we can actually look at how one model of mission for life has resulted in a small village around Ajnoch in Shival, very close to Pune. And there, we find that what did mission life have to offer to school kids? And for that, we said, what is it? What does the school kid require? And what does the teacher require for doing this? So, we started up by saying that mission life has a large number of objectives, right? But we can't do them all. So, how do you select the right ones for a particular sector of society? Now, our children there are rural kids, they are farmers, farmers' children, and they understand farming, right? But they don't want to continue farming there, they come into Pune and very often live in slums. So, how do we change that whole idea of what we are going to do? So, we realised that Pune has a large number of floral nurseries. And these people knew nothing about it because entrepreneurs from Pune were coming into these rural areas, setting up nurseries and selling plants. So, we said, we'll teach these children what they best know. And so, we have these kids here, they are making seed balls. After that, they are planting seeds there in trees, they see how they grow, and then they go out and plant them. So, it takes a whole year to do this cycle, right? But the joy that comes out of this is something tremendous because these kids, they take this back home. And these people, these children, have already in two or three years turned into entrepreneurs. They want to do this. Now, so how do you look at this in one slide, right? That's tough. You look at it as, how do you start this? You start this by actually looking at what's in the textbook for a particular standard. And that's called content analysis. So, you identify the content, you do training of teachers, you do a school program, and then you get these children to do something that we want, which is looking after endemic and endangered species of the Western Ghats. That's the job that AGCPR does, right? And so, we link now a rural program with what a scientific organisation wants to do. So, we have endemic plant species, we have food security, which Dr. Sagar will talk about. We have plantation and a restoration program. We have three nature trails, one in a wetland, one in a grassland, one in a forest patch, in a small area of forty-five acres. And we have nursery techniques. So, we are taking science to these children now, and they do many other things. They do waste management, they do agribiodiversity, they do eco- restoration. So, we've involved them in many things which they can do and probably, hopefully, don't migrate to the city. So, very quickly, that's where we are situated. This is the scenario around us. But close around us, one side is sugarcane farms and the other side is a barista small-scale industry. So, we have one last green patch. If you look at what we do, we do a lot of unusual things. We grow wild tubers, we grow wild relatives of food plants, we have a laboratory, and we take children to show them high-tech stuff that sugar does. So, it doesn't matter what they understand out of it, but there's an awareness that there's somewhere for them to go, right? And finally, it's great fun. It's all job-related skills. And this is how we do discussions with them about what they want to do in future. It starts by saying, we want to be doctors. And I say, oh, God, I was a doctor, but you know, why do you want to be a doctor? There's so many other things you can do. And finally, we do a lot of things. We give them a millet food. Now, these are people who have traditionally grown millets and have forgotten how to do that anymore, right? So, we're turning them back into their own cycle of life. And this is very quick. If you look at mission life, we've got lots of, lots of objectives, but we select them according to the sector that we are addressing, right? And so, we have these kind of things and that's our little sector. Thank you very much. Vivek, sir, you are next.
Should... I can go there?
Well, I must say that Vivek is an old, old friend of mine.
So, good morning, everyone. And at the outset, it is really an... I would like to say that it is really an honour to join everyone at this seventh international conference on the sustainability education, which is a very, very important area in the context of especially when we discuss about the mission life and sustainable lifestyles, sustainable development and lot of environment-related challenges. And especially, the education is one of the core thing through which we can educate not only our youth of future generations, but also education continues throughout the entire life. So, as far as the environmental dimension and mission life, seventy-five actions which you are saying, it is more required that the old generations also, that who have been, basically, if we see that our generation is more responsible for taking the younger generation to such a stage. So, at this stage, it is for sustainable future, it is a very, very important. And I congratulate Mobius Foundation for taking this initiative, for bringing together all the relevant stakeholders and have an in-depth discussion during this two-day conference. So, as we all know, that mission life launched by our Indian Prime Minister and which has also been acknowledged, not only at the national level, but also at the global level, that it is not just a policy, it is a people's movement and which also appeals us that to integrate a form of a culture in which, from the principle of Vasudhav Kutumbam, that our entire world or the globe, we are all part of the family of the global world. And it is our responsibility that to Mother Earth, how we are able to protect her because it sustains us, our life, and especially Homo sapiens, because we are the responsible also for creating all the damage. And so, we are also have to own the responsibility to protect and adopt the various type of sustainable lifestyles, especially the various actions which have been articulated within the mission life, mission and all. So, one of the more, the most important aspect is the use and dispose, that mindful consumption and mindful production. If we see that for various business cycles which are into the various type of production, so sometimes the production is just sort of to attract more and more, you can say, generate the consumption culture within the various strata of the society. And that also, it leads to what of, you can say, the carbon footprints and all without thinking that how much impact it is causing on the environment. So, we also have to go away from this competition for, you can say, just for the sake of buying and consuming and like that and not properly ensuring. Again, then the concept comes of the circular economy, that whatever is produced, then it's what is its end disposal. That also needs to be ensured. Only then, we have to see that ultimately, whatever is the final, finally after used, when we finally dispose of, then to what extent we are able to reduce the whatever damage it causes to the environment, maybe in terms of the plastic, maybe in terms of the waste which is generated. We see that in the urban areas, the common belief is that the life in the urban areas is far better than the rural areas. But now, it is going to be reversed because if you see there in the urban areas, there are challenges of the various type of air pollution, the sources of the drinking water, they are all polluted, the soil has been degraded and the mobility and all. The air we breathe is not clean, the water which we, in spite of spending lot of money on the, you can say, ROs and various type of filtration machinery, we are not able to get the basic needs of our... To sustain us, that the clean air, clean water and whatever the food we consume, it should be sourced from the, you can say, the soil, which is non-polluted because otherwise, for various type of chemicals and all, they go. So, now here lies the initial, as just now, we saw the initial clip, where the, what is the important role, which right from the beginning in the schools, there is need to be integrated in their curricula in a formal manner as well as informal manner. And right from the beginning, if they are educated, that just how, one example, how to raise a seedling and that. So, that itself, what are the learning in the schools through these informal and formal channels at various levels, maybe through the vocational training, green skills, lot of aspects now, if we go see this, that for achieving this, there are lot of potential for creation of the green jobs. And here lies the importance of the green skilling also. So, through these small, small steps in various areas at the local level, if we are able to take initiatives for the green skillings, ranging from the renewable energy, waste management, eco-entrepreneurship. So, that can trigger a generation of millions of the new type of careers. Also, at the higher education level, universities also, the waste management, waste to wealth, waste to wonder, there are no, lot of new things, things are there. So, now, these lifestyles and further, when we see the challenges of the creation of the green jobs, it also has the linkages with the generation of the livelihoods. So, the one can think of their career, maybe in terms of the renewable energy. If you see that the way the global targets in terms of the renewable energy, especially our India Solar Mission, the International Solar Alliance, India is also leading the way in which a lot of green skills, jobs, they are available in the renewable energy sector. Similarly, in the sustainable agriculture, the organic farming. So, there is an increasing demand for such things so that these are the areas in which we can create green jobs and at the same time, we can meet the objectives of the mission life. Similarly, I already have talked about the waste management and the circular economy. And the most important thing is, it has to be made a citizen movement. As we see, there recently, our Prime Minister has also launched for last, I think, one year that last year, Ek Paed Ma Ke Naam. So, there has to be some motive. The ultimate aim is that if we make it as a citizens' movement, that planting is sapling in the name of a mother, you are just basically, just what you owe towards the Mother Earth, you are doing those duties. So, in this also, there is a lot of potential because you have to ensure that wherever is the deforestation or tree felling, at the same time, you have to compensate that with by planting more and more trees. Similarly, there is a problem just like this crop residue burning also. Now, again, in the November, December for that Delhi and NCR, it's a big problem from the point of view of the segregation of the waste at the household level, urban waste, e-waste, plastic waste, there are various type of waste. And how the youth also needs to be trained that just we, what has been the approach in urban areas, we just want to keep clean our area and in the backyard, we don't want, we just throw the trash and we think that it is somebody's, as responsibility or somebody else will take care of itself. And everybody is thinking like this and that has resulted in the accumulation of this present-day grave problem in the urban areas especially. And we have all, are also responsible too for taking this to the rural areas. If we see that even in the rural areas, the now with this all fast food, chips, wrappers, wafers and all, so we are witnessing that surrounding those rural areas villages also, it is not properly disposed of. And we are responsible for introducing them to such type of so-called good lifestyles of the urban area and disturbing their already lifestyle which are in harmony with the nature. So, these are the, some of the key thoughts which I think need to be deliberated, that how the, under the mission life and when we talk of the sustainability and environmental education, so education curricula at various levels, maybe the schools, primary school, secondary and the university level, we have to, other than the formal education, we have to integrate this sort of, some sort of environmental ethos or in the entire set of spectrum of the, whatever the students at various levels, so that it is integrated as a culture within that, making it as a citizen movement. That is a very, very important aspect. So, the challenges which have resulted because of all these actions, they have resulted into the challenges of the climate change, biodiversity desertification, what we all discuss. So, mission life is, provides a framework that others can adopt and adapt. Imagine if one billion Indians practise sustainable lifestyles, generating one billion green opportunities, the ripple effect that will inspire the entire globe. And that also aligns with the Sustainable Development Goals, with National Climate Commitments and with global movement for education and empowerment. So, friends, the path to sustainability is not paved with the sacrifice, but with the innovation, dignity and resilience. Every tree planted under Ek Paed Ma Ke Naam, every kilogram of waste turned into the wealth, every young leader is starting a green enterprise. These are the stepping stones to a future where economy and ecology thrive together. Let's resolve to make mission life not only an Indian initiative, but a global movement for humanity and the entire planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Saxena. I've been asked to live in the time and I've been told that I'm responsible. So, to keep to responsibility, I hope you all keep to time. So, to shorten the process, please introduce yourself the way you all want to introduce yourself, rather than have some long introduction. So, madam?
I'll go there. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Let me start with that to, and join others in congratulating Mobius. Dr. Ramhodj, Mr. Barman for successfully organising this important conference every year, Seventh One, congratulations. Today, I'm here wearing two hats. And under both the hats, I want to make just one simple point and I'll stick to the point and I will not repeat what already eloquently both you and you have said and I'm sure the ministry and others will also say. The first hat that I wear is of IUCN Commission on Education and Communication, Regional Vice Chair for South and Southeast Asia. I invite all of those who know what IUCN is and all those who don't know what IUCN is, please go out, there's a booth. I want you to visit that so that you know what this organisation and this commission is all about. In this role, I was in Salzburg, Austria last week, where there was a convening of around forty education experts on the theme, Nature-Based Education: Time for Action. Nature-Based Education: Time for Action. I just want you to remember, I'm going to repeat some of the points that I feel is important. So, one thing was very clear after these intense discussions, that with the current planetary crisis that we are all going through and I don't want to repeat what all we have already know, and the technology, AI, all of us know that, all jobs, mind you, all jobs will have to be green very soon. I'm going to repeat again, all jobs that we are currently thinking of, know of, do, will all have to be green jobs ultimately. This means all work, livelihood options, will directly or indirectly, will have to contribute to sustainability or for regeneration of our planet. That's given. So, what does this mean to all of us sitting here, educators, policymakers, civil society, I see some students also? It means that we all need to go back to the drawing table and ask the basic questions on what is the purpose of education? Isn't that what the seminar is all about today? Or is it just to get degrees on jobs? If you're not bringing in educate, if you're not bringing in nature or technology into our education, how are we preparing ourselves and the next generation? That's the question I want to ask. So, nature-based education therefore becomes even more crucial because nature is not just an important tool. Technology is a tool, but nature is not just a tool. It is our classroom, it is our teacher, it is our curriculum, it is an inspiration, isn't it? It is life. And I, who are we? We are nature. So, if we don't bring in, how can education have, be anything without nature? So, any education without nature is not good education. Clearly, that is very clear, right? Are we doing it? That's the question. So, nature-based education, as Professor Barucha just mentioned, is an enabler also. But it also transforms educational practices into strategies that helps individuals become aware of and understand the natural connections between significant challenges like climate change, food and water security, biodiversity loss, natural disasters, human well-being and planetary health. Clearly, no conservation solution, whatever solution could be a programme, it could be a project, no conservation solution will be effective unless we change the way we live and act. We live and act. And that is moulded by how and what we learn. This is where mission life becomes important. This is exactly where mission life becomes important. It is not only how we work, but how we live that is crucial in contributing to regenerating our planetary health. Investing in nature-based education and you can call it any form, CE does it in environmental education, somebody does it in sustainable, education for sustainable development, you can call it any name, is investing in the future of conservation. Remember that half of the world's population is under thirty and thirty percent is under eighteen. They will sustain the conservation of future. So, that was my, one point that I really wanted to make under this hat. But I want to now wear the second hat that is as the DG of the Centre for Media Studies, a research-based think-tank in Delhi since nineteen ninety-one. We also do initiatives under the brand name of CMS Vatavaran with a tagline of nurturing stewards and leaders for planetary well-being. We also run Asia's largest green film festival and foreign exclusively on environment and wildlife. I see many people here who have been part of that. We run numerous programmes with children and youth, engaging them on various environmental issues, reconnecting them to nature. Currently, we are working with the ministry, MOE FCC and NAQM on air pollution campaign in NCR region and have conducted many festivals and programmes around mission life. So, why am I bringing in CMS Vatavaran? I'm bringing in to highlight how important non-formal education is a critical component of education or learning. And I think we saw some examples when Dr. Barucha presented. Non-formal programmes run by civil society, I think I changed this, no, it's okay. So, non-formal programmes run by civil society organisations like us and many more in this conference, like see Dr. Barucha does, what the ministry does. And this conference itself is an example of how such non-formal education programmes contribute for lifelong learning. Very critical, lifelong learning, not just in the school, school years. I come from social and behavioural change background and there, we focus on how does a person get their learning and source of information across their life cycle. We usually believe that the formal education is only twenty percent. Not that it's not important, it's very crucial. Non-formal, around thirty percent and informal remaining fifty percent. So, we distinguish formal education as a structured education system with certification or degrees. Non-formal programmes like workshops, conferences, festivals, nature tours, or the workshops that Dr. Barucha just illustrated, or some programmes like Pudni Ma does, are also structured programmes, but without any formal certification. And informal is the other learning that happens in life from parents, peers, media, etc. The importance therefore of non-formal education and learning cannot be stressed enough, especially in a programme like... in a program like mission life, where we talk about lifestyle changes, lifestyle changes, it's not one time. These are not one-time changes. We talk, these are need to be consistent and throughout our life cycle. But life cycle is when I'm born to when I die, the whole life cycle, this, this is, that is why mission life is important. So, also don't forget the large number of children and youth out of educational institutes in our country. For example, it's estimated around fifteen crores are out. So, they need to be addressed too, right? So, let me end by just sharing a very small recent incident. I was at a dinner hosted by Ram Bhuj, the Mobis, day before yesterday, I think, and I sat at the table eating with a young woman and a very elderly gentleman. As we started speaking, I realized both of them were former journalists. It was very interesting. I come from the media background also, so it started having a very animated discussion. The elderly gentleman was of course a retired, well-known journalist and the other, the young lady turned out to be somebody who quit journalism to become an entrepreneur by starting an online platform for sustainable tourism. The conversation then turned totally very interesting and fascinating because the gentleman just could not understand what the young lady was doing and just how could she earn money by as he called being sustainable? Yeah? No, he said doing, how can you earn money by doing sustainability? That's the question he asked, you know? And it just took so much time and effort, khana rahegiya, that it, to explain how she's using technology and her life purpose to start a new venture that is completely new. And I think till few years ago, nobody heard about sustainable tourism and starting a platform like that was completely out of her own initiative. So, ladies and gentlemen, I share this story to show how the young are thinking and doing way beyond our imagination, using technology and being purposeful and conscious of their duty as citizens of this planet to create new business opportunities and jobs. I hope we all can follow suit and be more responsible to our respective roles and work to contribute in our own way for planetary well-being. Thank you very much.
Thank you, madam. Some thoughts from you?
Yes, I'll go there as well. Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for having me and I would like to congratulate Dr. Pradeep Barman, Dr. Bhuj and for Mr. Praveen Garg for having such an amazing, wonderful conference and I think the most appreciative thing that I found about this conference is that we have students, youth and experts coming together because youth need to be at the center of the conversation that we are having, which is on green jobs. I am here in my capacity of working in the food system space and working with international organizations. So, currently I am with the Global Alliance for Improved Nutrition and Forum for the Future, looking at system change projects in the food system space and in energy transition as well. And since here we are talking about life mission and green jobs, I would like to share my perspective of, of how I see life mission. I see life mission not just as a top-down, high-level policy initiative, I see it as a initiative of everyday choices because it's our everyday choices which will lead to green jobs. Green jobs are actually the outcome of the choices that we'll make and given the youth dividend is on our side still, the key thing here is with that, with that youth dividend that we have, these choices that we make is going to unlock the newer value chains, greener value chains and greener enterprises, which will eventually become the backbone of the employment of our economy. So, it's key that we talk about green jobs and act upon it now because the opportunity is now. Now, as someone who has been working on food and energy transitions for a long time, I see there's an enormous potential, employment potential in these sectors and the transition that is happening. And where I see the potential is be it farmers who are getting into producing bioinputs when we are talking about sustainable agriculture. So, there's, there's an opportunity there to unlock local enterprises. Be it talking about sustainable packaging because eventually that needs to be the norm now, we need to get into sustainable packaging or when we come to energy sector, looking at having solar or wind technicians that we need now and also green architects in the energy sector space. So, when we look at life mission, don't look at it as an environment mission, look at it as an employment mission. So, that's my outlook on life mission. Now, talking from the experience that I have in, working in the food and energy space. So, in food system transformation, we're looking at the pathways, how we can scale the bioinput economy because that is going to be the need of the hour when we talk about sustainable agriculture. You can't do sustainable agriculture by still putting in chemical fertilizer into soil. We need to look at where, what are those bioinputs, biopesticides, biofertilizers that, that we need and that is where we need to develop those local enterprises. So, when we are looking at the bioinput economy and how do we scale that, there is an opportunity of building those greener enterprises. Now, moving on to the energy transition because that's also something that I work on. Now, when we look into energy transitions, what we are looking at is how we can make the renewable energy value chain more responsible? How do we distribute fairly the benefits and the risks that are coming out of our transition to renewable energy? How do we ensure there is inclusion of marginalized communities and community engagement right from the planning stages of those, of those units, of those projects that are coming in renewable energy space? And that's where we'll be able to secure dignified, greener employment rather than just having for the sake of it, calling it greener jobs. So, inclusion is key right from the planning stages, thinking of responsibility is key. Now, my experiences from these initiatives gives me clear lessons and what those lessons are, that green jobs will not emerge automatically. It has to be intentional, it has to be designed organically. So, right from the policies and the programs, when we start planning for it, you have to think of green jobs, you have to think of what skills would be needed. And so, I'd like to propose three key things that we can do now we're talking, when we are talking about greener jobs. First is investing in green jobs and when we, and I say investing in green jobs, what does it mean? In integrating the, the training modules that we need in the, not just the formal education system but also informal ones, the vocational programs that we have. So, integrating those training programs into the education system, be it ITIs, be it universities, be it vocational programs, so that we can have a future-ready workforce. Second thing, support the local entrepreneurs with financing, with incubation support and also market linkages so that the small and medium enterprises, which we are banking upon can actually be sustainable and offer green jobs, not just in the urban centers but also in the small cities, tier-one, tier-two cities and rural parts of the country. So, really support, meaningful support to these local enterprises is the key. And third and the last thing, strengthening data and monitoring. So, I work in the space of monitoring food systems as well, looking at what are those, those indicators, those metrics that are needed so that we know that we are actually transforming our food systems. But then when I look at green jobs, what about the data and monitoring there? How do we know how many green jobs are emerging and how do we know what are the skills which are in demand currently and are going to be in demand in future so that we can invest strategically in those skills? So, work on strengthening the data and monitoring systems. With that, I'd like to close by just saying that green jobs, if we move them from just being a niche currently to the mainstream, it is actually going to become the backbone of a resilient and a future-ready economy, which we all are looking for when we talk about Viksit Bharat twenty forty-seven. So, green jobs, as I heard, is the future, there is no choice, then moving towards green jobs and the time is now to act upon it. Thank you.
Very good morning and I really like to thank Mobius Foundation, ICAC, all the committee members, organizers, Dr. Barucha, Dr. Saxena and all the panelists. Thank you very much. Also, we belong to Navarji Godrej Centre for Plant Research and we have a small story, this is just an example exactly what we do. So, this is just a workflow of NGCPR but the NGCPR is actually established in nineteen ninety-two by Godrej's family and we thank Mr. Vijay Mohan Krishna and Sumita Godrej Krishna who look after the institution very closely. What we do in terms of the biodiversity conservation and sustainable development is the field tours through which we collect the seeds of different wild plant species in terms of their conservation. So, how we do it in terms of conservation, the ex situ conservation and the in situ conservation, we establish the nurseries and then we do the plantations, actual plantations in field. Research is a very integral part of this process because without research, you cannot really decide which plantations to be done, where they have to be done. So, for that, obviously I'll talk into detail and the organization is actually supported by the Department of Scientific and Industrial Research. Last but not least, for the biodiversity conservation, we conduct the outreach programs in various schools and colleges. So, we don't, we have a number, it's a huge number. So, why, why this institution and why actually we need to look into the other side of this story? So, on one side, we have the over-exploitation of the natural resources for various purposes, whether it is for food, whether it is for medicine or whether it is for pharma purposes and there is a disappearing of the traditional knowledge. Obviously, these are, all are interconnected. So, for example, the extreme weather events, whether it is climate change or the sustainable agriculture, there is overuse of chemical fertilizers, fungicides and everything is going on and I don't know whether we really can stop it but at least we can try to see how we can minimize the effects of all these. So, there is definitely a malnutrition or the food or feed competition, especially in rural and tribal regions. So, what are the alternatives? So, we know that we have various cultivars or various plants that we eat or consume on daily basis, but the wild edible plant species come to, come into the picture because they are more climate resilient. Obviously, we don't need to use any chemical fertilizers, you can grow them organically. So, that is one of the advantages. So, we take the tubers, the wild edible tubers or the legumes as an example. So, this is our farm at Navarji Godrej Centre for Plant Research. You see that we have a collection of various tubers that we collected from all over the Maharashtra. Coconut is very rich in this particular plant species. Then what is our objective is the collection and identification of those wild tubers, their conservation and cultivation. So, we establish the cultivation practices for those tubers, but the very importantly, the nutritional properties because you need to know what are, what are the nutritional properties of those different tubers or whether it's a bean or any other kind of vegetable. So, we have the technology, so obviously it's, it's, it's a high-end technology that we all know and see what are the ingredients because unless and until you know what's in there, you cannot really develop a product out of it, you cannot market it or you cannot tell farmers why to cultivate it. So, obviously they are, farmers, they are cultivating but obviously in very small patches. So, again, as I said, we don't really use, we don't need to use any chemicals or any fungicides for cultivating these tubers. So, once you know what's in there, they can be used in pharma industries and obviously for various kinds of medicinal purposes. So, what actions we have, so this number is actually, all these pictures are really, really very tiny pictures. So, we have a very huge number. So, recently we have a project from Maharashtra government, it's a Maharashtra Gene Bank project through which we collect the seeds of native and endemic plant species from different regions of Maharashtra. Obviously, we collect the tubers and other wild edible vegetables. So, we interact with the community, the local tribal people, try to understand what's the traditional knowledge that they have and try to bring into the picture. Then obviously we do the plantation programs in schools, colleges and with the like-minded organizations, even at the farmers' field, to understand what is the importance of those plant species rather than going for the exotics, exotic plant species. We also have the teacher training program, the, the sessions for cultivation of different types of the wild tubers or the beans. Then we conduct the workshops for seed germination, try to understand why and how to germinate those different kinds of seeds. So, the last thing is about what are the outcomes. So, definitely we would like you to also start with some of these missions with the following outcomes that we have, the biodiversity conservation in terms of saving the gene pool for future because there is a disappearing knowledge obviously in terms of tradition but the loss of biodiversity, there is no genetic diversity, so we have to increase that base. Saving the gene pool for future through seed banking is very, very, very important. Ex situ and in situ conservation through which we can conserve these species and obviously the ecosystem diversity or the genetic diversity, creating livelihood opportunities very important because nowadays, especially in Maharashtra, people are really aware of all those wild edible species, their cultivation practices and the medicinal uses. So, there is a documentation of traditional knowledge, involvement of participa, and participation of different communities for conservation of the nature. So, we definitely need those wild gem plasmas so that we can create new cultivars without the use of chemicals or the fertilizers. So, this, just to give two examples at the bottom, a lady who's received, who's conserving the wild yam, it's a huge yam species from Kerala and the, on the other side, we know, we all know the seed mother of Maharashtra, Rahe Bhai Popre, Maoshi, she received a Padmashri awardee because she has a huge collection of all those wild edible beans. So, if, if the farmers are actively involved, then why we scientists or why can't we do all and support this biodiversity conservation? So, obviously I'm pretty sure that you got the message about this mission life. So, we definitely looking for a green tomorrow, a green future through cultivation of these wild native endemic plant species. So, thank you very much and Dr. Kranti Ardi, she's in the middle, I'm pretty sure you know her. So, thank you again and if you have any questions, we can definitely discuss. Thank you. Thank you, Shagur. Sir, some thoughts from you?
Can I have PPT slides, slideshow, anyone working on? Okay, yes, there. So, a very good morning to all, myself, Dr. Chari. I'm director working in Ministry of Environment, Forest, Climate Change. So, today I have very respectful dignitaries present here, which are, who are working in various fields of mission life. It's my privilege to be here, to be present before you, to give this presentation on mission life, where I would like to express my thoughts and our government of India's, particularly the Ministry of Environment, Forest, Climate Change, initiatives on mission life and as we are the foremost government organization who are propagating the mission life at various platforms, both at the global level as well as the national level. So, coming to this, the mission life, I hope everyone here must be aware of the background from where it has come because I'm bit late because of the impromptu urgent office course in the morning morning.
Past three, four decades where we are gradually drifting bit. So that is why we felt the need for, our country felt the need for this mission life. Where we wanted to bring back those environmentally sustainable habits into our daily lives, which our ancestors have already practiced a lot and it is our role to pass it on to the next generations. So, uh, so under this mission life, so there are three particular aspects where we are working upon rightly on mission life. Like the preliminary phase is the change in the demand phase and the change in supply and change in policy. So the change in demand is first step is to nudge the individuals to practice as a simple environmental friendly actions in the daily lives. So that there will be a change in the demand in the various themes like energy, water and various other themes which mission life is connected with. And in the supply phase also, so there is a demand to nudge industries and markets towards changing their supply chain systems and use of sustainable and eco-friendly products so that we can consume more sustainable products which are environmentally friendly. And the change in policy, so this trigger shifts in the large-scale industrial and government policies. Because, uh, so all the three phases are all currently in practice and at various stages. And but more emphasis is to be done at every phase at this point of time. Because we are just in the, since it has started in the two thousand twenty-one and we are in the just, we are fifth year running. Where, um, more actions are to be required focused to get a more impactful journey in the mission life. So everyone must be aware of this, the mission life has seven themes, I will not delve into this seven life, seven themes of mission life. So these are the seven nineteen, seven energy actions which are detailed, the PDF document of the, um, all the seventy-five actions where you have to work, where any individual can work are available on the net under the NITI I O website. And so you can easily access those things. Just wanted to focus on like some, one of five of these, uh, actions. Like using of LED bulbs and tube lights and using public transport wherever possible and setting the states instead of elevators wherever possible. And preferring CNG and EV vehicles instead of petrol or diesel vehicles and use bicycles for local transports. So just wanted to highlight some of the nineteen actions which you can adopt in your daily life. Under the seven, under the save water actions, so these are also available on the document. Uh, I will not go deep into it. And these are the creatives which are already available on our portal where you can access and use it for public dissemination and creating awareness among the public. So, um, and so this is the third theme, reduce waste, where the actions have been specified. And these are the creatives available on the web portal of Ministry of Environment and Forest. And this is the reduce e-waste actions, uh, where you can, everyone can try to practice. And, uh, these are the few creatives available where we have to discard the guard gates, gate gates in the nearest recycling units instead of dumping in the solid waste yards. And repair and reuse the electronic devices instead of discarding it and using the rechargeable batteries. And preferring the cloud storage over a pen drive or hard drive. So under the adopt sustainable food systems, as our honorable speaker have already given few thoughts on the adopt sustainable food systems. Where the Government of India is currently promoting the use of millets, which you all are aware. And there is a lot of emphasis on, uh, using millet-based foods across various, uh, public restaurants and everywhere. So, um, which is very much important for us to bring, um, mission life into the daily practices. And adopt sustainable food system, these are the few creatives, uh, which are, which you can practice in the daily life. And moreover, the importance of the preferring the local available foods is one of the important aspects which we should inculcate in our daily life. Because the transportation, as per the study, the transportation of foods from distant places have lot of carbon intensive emissions. Uh, so which can be avoided if we adopt, use the locally available foods. And also use kitchen gardens wherever possible and promote the vegetable cultivation on your terraced gardens wherever possible. So, and another important aspect is the theme is saying no to single-use plastic where then actions have been specified. And, uh, it is to bring to your kind notice that India has already banned twenty-one varieties of single-use plastics, which everyone might be aware. So it is requested that the single-use plastic like straws and polythene covers of a certain thickness are to be discouraged from use. And these are the few creatives and adopt healthy lifestyles. This is also one of the theme of the mission life where we need to adopt healthy lifestyles by various actions, which includes, um, practicing yoga and use of medicinal plants. And these are the few creatives which we are just, uh, we can access on our portal. So coming to the why mission life, India is taking up in a global, so we are taking up a mission life at various international platforms wherever possible. And it is, uh, our privilege to say that India has successfully adopted, piloted an India resolution on the promoting sustainable lifestyles in March two thousand twenty-four. It is a big achievement because adopting a resolution on an international forum, fora. It's a, uh, nothing but a very big achievement for India, which is a environmental friendly nation and promoting sustainability in its ethos. So even in the mission life has been quoted at various international forums like COP twenty-seven and G twenty new leaders declaration has also mentioned mission life, showing the importance of mission life at the global level. Now even, uh, the forthcoming U N I A seven also, we are taking the mission life, uh, concept at the international level, asking the international audience to adopt sustainable lifestyles. Because the developed nations are more, um, ca- carbon intensive societies where the sustainable lifestyle is a very important aspect to be adopted. Because in all the India, our per capita consumption is very lower. But still we have the international fora needs to take up this mission life in a huge way. So the coming to the national outreach, apart from the international outreach, we are also collaborating with the line ministries and state governments for propagating the mission life through various campaigns. Now the National Plastic Pollution Reduction Campaign is going on under Swachhatahi Seva two thousand twenty-five. Where the, uh, the central ministries are working collaboratively like with Mohawar and, um, DDWS drinking water sanitation. We have already launched a huge Swachhatahi Seva campaign, which you can access through their portals also. And we have two dedicated portals developed for mission life, that is one is Merry Life Portal and Mission Life Portal. Where you can get, in the Mission Life Portal, you can download the creative content available for usage for public awareness. And the Merry Life Portal has, where you can participate in the mission life activities and, um, put it on your, on the website. And one and the important aspect which we are doing at the national level is the integration of the mission life in the school curriculum. Although environmental education is already available, but we are trying to pursuing with the Ministry of Education, both at the, um, school education level as well as the higher education level to promote mission life as a syllabus within the, um, school as well as the higher education, um, curriculums. And the role of youth particularly because India is a youth rightly, we have around eighteen to twenty percent of youth population. So it is very important for the youth population to practice mission life as a daily habit. Uh, because the habits and particularly the age group between five to fifteen is a character building age. Where incorporating the mission life habits will take them a long way in helping the propagating the mission life. And the green economy, promoting eco-friendly industries and sustainable models. Um, these various skill development programs are being conducted. Even E L P programs are all, experiential learning programs are being promoted on the May Bharat portal. Where the youth can register themselves and learn about what is mission life and how they can further, uh, participate in the mission life activities. So everywhere, I request all the youth present here, they can register themselves on the May Bharat portal. Where you can, even we are launching a experiential learning program shortly. Um, which the youth can participate and experience the ministry's work culture. Where we are also calling the youth delegates to our ministry and explaining them what they can practice about, how they wanted to bring changes on the level of mission life. And the green skills, um, so the Skill Development Ministry is also working on the green skills. Uh, where the focus is on integrating the mission life into the skill, uh, skill development. And where we are capacity building the, uh, youth particularly for creating awareness on the mission life and how they can build new entrepreneurship opportunities at the level of mission life. So the impacts of the life actions, so as far as, these are these few studies which have been carried out based on which, um, the life actions if adopted globally will have a drastic impact on the environment. So coming to the Ekpad Makana, our Vivek Srinath already has told about the Ekpad Makana. So we have already achieved the target of one forty crores in the year two thousand twenty-five, March. And now we have launched the Ekpad Makana two point O. Where I request everyone present here to plant a tree and participate in this campaign also. So, um, I request all of you to become an active partner in successful, uh, success of the life promoting sustainable lifestyles in your sphere of operations. And also register on the Merry Life Portal as well as the, or download the Merry Life app and participate in the mission life activities. And certificates are also being generated on the Merry Life app. Where you can, after successful completion of the activities, you can get the mission life certificate. Uh, which will be sort of recognition for the activities you have undertaken. And finally, I also request join Ekpad Makana campaign and let's grow into a pro-planet community. So thank you, so you can get in touch with me at these details. And now I request the, uh, video. A small video which we have prepared on the mission life, just a two-minute video.
With the intent of propagating India's values of harmonious coexistence with nature, Honorable Prime Minister Narendra Modi announced his vision of mission life. Lifestyle for environment and gave a clarion call for global awakening and action towards mindful utilization of resources.
हम सब अपनी रोजमरा की जिंदगी में ऐसा बहुत कुछ कर सकते हैं जिससे पर्यावरण की सुरक्षा हो. Mission life, यह मानता है कि अपनी lifestyle में बदलाव करके environment की रक्षा की जा सकती है.
The Ministry of Environment, Forest and Climate Change has launched a mascot, Prakriti, to communicate the message of conservation of natural resources and effective waste management. Prakriti is the child of Mother Earth who carries forward sustainability message and nudges us into adopting environment-friendly lifestyle. Small steps taken by all of us would be a giant stride in our collective efforts to combat climate change. Mission life has seven themes linked to our daily lives, under which pro-planet actions can be taken by all of us. These themes are save water, save energy, save move to single-use plastic, reduce waste, reduce e-waste, adopt sustainable food system and adopt healthy lifestyle. In order to mainstream life actions in our daily lives, two dedicated portals have been created, Mission Life and Merry Life. Mission Life Portal is a knowledge repository comprising useful information on life and also social media, creatives, videos and events and such other awareness material on life. The Merry Life Portal has enabled effective monitoring and assessment of individual as well as collective actions on life. Number of events related to life have been organized individually as well as collectively, as also by various departments, organizations and institutions. Mission life is about creating a culture of sustainability and promoting eco-friendly practices. It inspires individuals to make small actions in their daily lives and join hands with millions of pro-planet people across the world for a sustainable future. Our choices and our behaviors, both individually and collectively, can have a tremendous impact on the environment. Mission life is about democratizing the battle against climate change. We are all trustees of planet Earth. Let us come together and join hands with Prakriti in implementing mission life and make a difference to the earth we live in.
So that's all the, thank you and thank you, Mr. Baruchji, Baruchaji and Ramboji and Praveer sir. And Bhagishri ma'am and all the dignitaries here and the audience for being patient in listening to us. And thank you very much. And now I request my colleague, Swaroop Adhyaya to, um, take a pledge on the mission life. So I request Swaroop Adhyaya.
Good morning, everybody. I am Dr. Swaroop Adhyaya, working in ministry as scientist, the joint director. Uh, before, uh, before like I last, from twenty twenty-three onwards until twenty twenty-four last year, I was handling this mission life for, I think, more than two more, like approximately two years. I have been handling this mission life in the ministry. And at that time, we have done like, for the effort shake, I just want to inform you. In one month, like fifth May to fifth June, in one month only, we have conducted one point six million events in all over the India. And we have taken like twenty-three million mission life pledge. So that was a mass mobilization kind of thing for, for the ministry. For in one month for organizing this kind of event is like, it was like a big achievement of the ministry. And right now I am handling IA policy in the ministry from last year. Uh, in that IA policy like we are making policy for like environmental impact assessment. Wherein we are adding like things which support to the environment and which support to mission life. Like we are providing, like we have making one policy that any environmental clearance, we are issuing and industry, they have to achieve thirty-three percent green belt. And they need to like adopt this Ekpad Makana. They need to, uh, nudging, they need to organize event in their organizations and all. Like our Chari sir has already covered all the things and explained very well about the vision of the ministry and what we are doing in the ministry in the mission life. That, yeah, like Chari sir has requested, I just want to request organizers to give permission so that we can take a life pledge here itself. Uh, sir. Yeah, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. Just, just I am, I am telling first, then you can repeat all. Yeah. I pledge to make all possible changes. Yeah. In my daily life, to protect the environment. I also commit to continuously motivate my family, friends and others about the importance of environmentally friendly habits. मैं प्रतिज्ञा करता हूँ कि पर्यवाण को बचाने के लिए अपनी दैनिक जीवन में हर संभव बदलाव लाऊँगा. मैं यह भी वचन देता हूँ कि मैं अपने परिवार, मित्रों और अन्य लोगों को पर्यवाण के अनुकूल, आर्थों और व्यवहारों के महत्व के विषय में सतत्रूप से प्रेरित करूँगा. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Adhyaya and, uh, mission life, which is for initiative of India, our own prime minister, which has been recognized at the global level. There is an opportunity, if you understand that, no, everyone knows that World Conservation Congress of the International Union for Conservation of Nature, which is scheduled in the month of just October, is starting from ninth October to fourteenth October in Abu Dhabi, UAE. And that is one platform. That platform is even bigger than whatever we see that climate change COP and all. It is the COP of the COPs if you say that all conservation aspect, the biggest conservation congregation. I think ministry may take a note of it and I think the mission life campaign should be properly showcased also during the World Conservation Congress of the I U C N. Since I am appealing, I have been part of the ministry earlier also and I have been earlier country head of the I U C N in India also. So that's why it is also a special request that ministry, if you just check if you have not taken any steps, still there is a time. And Dr. Vasanti, she can connect with that and at least you can showcase the mission life in Abu Dhabi, UAE.
Well, we have run short of time, but that's the best we could do. And I must say lots of thinking has emerged from this today. And I think it's important that if we can have just five minutes more. Can we have one-liners from each of you?
Uh, sir, as our mission life target is to make pro-planet pupil, we need to adopt such a lifestyle so that we can say us that I am a pro-planet pupil.
तो अभी तो National Plastic Pollution Reduction Campaign चल रही है. I just request, uh, single-use plastic हटाओ और पर्यवाण को बचाओ.
For mission life, my sentence would be, please, please promote the native and endemic plant species for sustainable development and the sustainable agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my short message would be when we talk about green jobs, youth is key. Get youth in every forum, every discussion about green jobs, about life mission, they are the ones who are gonna take it forward, so they are key.
Well, because this is a special panel on, only on green jobs, I again want to reiterate. सब कुछ ग्रीन होगा और ग्रीन, different, different, you heard all our panelists, we all spoke about different issues of the same thing. Uh, different parts of the same thing and different perspectives of the same thing. All jobs will have to have some conservation, sustainability or regeneration angle, there is no other option.
Remember, adopt and act at every moment on the seven themes and seventy-five actions of the mission life.
Well, I'm supposed to round this up. And what is going to be the difference between current jobs and jobs which will look at mission life? And I think the most important difference is going to be that the jobs you will get out of mission life must come out of your passion. And if it's come out of your passion and love for nature and interconnectedness to nature, you young people will have very successful jobs in mission life. So thank you very much, thanks to the organizers. I think we round up with this, thank you very much, thank my panelists very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you to these team panelists for your time and for reprising us. So youth is the key and I think it's time for action now, yeah. So now I request Dr. Bhuj to please come and felicitate our esteemed panel, thank you. Dr. Baruch, thank you. Dr. Saagar.
Finally.
I know we're running out of time, but can we please have a group photograph with the panel? Dr. Bhuj. Dr. Bhuj, please, for a group photograph with the panel. And then post this, please join us for tea. Thank you.